I'd like to call the Order of Seven Meeting of the Mayor and City Council, Monday, May the 23rd, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Mo.
What do you think, Mr. Mayor? Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
President Sidnor?
Here.
Mayor Mo.
Moving on to item number two on the agenda, the reports of the Mayor and City Council. And I will start off first. I prepared a statement, so, read it. I wanted to say to the Mayor and City Council, is committed to the safety and welfare of our residents of Laurel. We're all in this together, we'll work through this together, stay encouraged, and follow the CDC instructions. Be a good citizen, check on your neighbors. When you're out shopping, be a good citizen to your fellow neighbor. We as elected officials is obligated to keep this city running, and we will do this to the best of our abilities. So please, once again, please stay encouraged, and we're here working for you as hard as we can. And I'll start with Mr. Lez, or I'll continue with Mr. Lez.
Thank you, Mr. President. All I want to say is, I appreciate the people that have called, our senior citizens over the past week. Members of the city staff, members of our churches. And it's appreciated by those individuals when they get a phone call, because they know that their community is watching out for them. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lez. Start with Ms. Nicholas, continue.
Thank you. I, excuse me, I along with the mayor, staff, and some dedicated volunteers this past Saturday passed out in a number of the neighborhoods, some information about this COVID-19. In addition to that, I've been delivering for the last two weeks non-perishable food items, toilet paper, and water. I'm not going into anyone's home, I'm just dropping them off at the front, at the front door. I just want to say that, you know, I think the mayor, the council, the staff, our leadership here, from the city administrator to Steve Allen, have done a wonderful job with the command center. There is a senior hotline number. Hopefully, we can get that posted, or we can call that number out before we leave today. And we can also give out the number to the command center. I just everyone to please be mindful, as our president said, President Keith Sidnor, to check on our neighbors, and keep washing our hands, and just listen to the news, listen to our state, local, and federal leaders. As we get through this crisis, I do believe we're going to get through it. It may take some time, but I just encourage everybody just to be safe. Thank you.
And Councilmember Nicholas, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to encourage everyone to stay calm and follow the rules of the CDC. Also want to thank my colleagues on the council, and the mayor, and the staff behind them for the hard work they're doing here in the city of Laurel. I'm very proud to be part of this team, and I'm sure we're all going to make it through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Smith, Mr. DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. My son, who is in college, returned from Myrtle Beach on Saturday. So he's now in a, his, he has 12 days left of his self-quarantine according, with regards to Governor Hogan's executive order to quarantine anybody that goes anywhere on spring break. The other thing, I know everybody, including me, we're getting inundated with all kinds of different things from TV, especially on my phone, I get them from everywhere. And it's about, everything's about the coronavirus. And the thing is, two weeks ago, even before this event, this pandemic hit, our Emergency Operations Center was open. And what caught my ear last night was Vice President Pence, when he said, he said, "Don't rely on the federal government." He said, "That's up to educate you and to get, keep you abreast of all the information. It's up to the state and the local government." And we have that. We have probably the best team and the best operations manager, emergency operations manager in the nation. And they are there at the operations center. So if you have any questions, if you hear any rumors, and they're out there, that's for sure, you can call them directly. You're going to get a representative there from the city who's working very, very hard. And the head of our Emergency Operations Center, Steve Allen, who I've heard, he's been sleeping there for almost two weeks, because he won't go home until every question is answered. He'll be there. And so, call that number. Any help, any symptoms, anything you need, they can direct you in the right direction. And they can, they've already got rid of all the false information, and everything that they tell is truthful. You can rely on it and depend on it, and it's for anybody in Laurel or the surrounding areas. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. DeWalt. Before I go on to Mr. Mayor, I wanted to let you know that Mayor Craig Mo has been working very hard in this city. He showed his leadership in this city. I'm very impressed with the mayor, I always have been. And working for the past week, we got the right mayor in the right place to do this job. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. I have some prepared remarks. I don't mean to be lengthy, but I think I'm going to take the opportunity to remind our community of a couple of things. First of all, good evening, and thank you all for tuning in tonight. This is our virtual Mayor and City Council meeting. I want to thank the president for making sure that the business of city government still continues. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the members of the city council for all of their support and working with the administration and the community. Especially you, Mr. President, again, thank you for sitting in on the many meetings, telephone conferences, video conferences that we have had. And I do appreciate that, as well as the staff. To members of the general public, your government is always prepared, preparing for the worst, and we are always hoping for the best. We continue to monitor and work with the public safety and health, public health officials at the county, the state, federal levels of government. The city has been working to educate the public by providing handouts by our many social media platforms, Laurel TV. And we held our first virtual interactive town hall meeting for the general public. It was well received, and I thank all the members of the public for their comments. We hope to have another one, as well as one for the business community that we are monitoring as well. The city is coordinating and following the advice of our city health officer. And we are following the guidance from CDC, the state, and county public health departments to keep all of us safe from the virus. All departments are following our coronavirus workforce action plan to provide guidance and procedures for keeping our employees safe. The city of Laurel's Emergency Operations Center has been upgraded to partial activation level. Governor Hogan's executive orders will all be followed, along with other actions taken by the city of Laurel. As you know, effective March the 16th at 5:00 PM, all bars, restaurants, physical fitness centers, spas, and movie theaters were closed until further notice. And we had our code enforcement go out and check those on that date and time. We are to follow CDC guidelines for gathering of less than 10 people. That is in effect, and we will enforce that as well. All city offices will remain open. However, service delivery will be conducted online or by telephone only. Access to city buildings and indoor recreational facilities will be restricted to city employees only. The Laurel Police Department offices will remain open, however administrative services, administrative services delivery will be conducted online or by telephone. The main lobby of the police department is open for emergencies, as well as those that might need tow releases or other things from the department when they're considered emergency. Public Works will continue to provide vital services such as refuge, recycling, organic, composting collections on a regular schedule. Special trash pickups will continue as well, they'll have the normal schedule. But that is subject to change. We were on a telephone conference call last night with county officials and other municipal officials. The county is stop, is going to stop their bulk pickups. We think it's important to continue that as long as we can, as people are inside, you know. Hooker down for a while, maybe they'll be doing some cleanups, and they'll need that bulk trash pickup. So we want to continue that as long as possible. All of our senior van transportation will operate to transport seniors to medical appointments, kidney dialysis, local grocery stores. All outdoor city parks will remain open, however, event permits have been suspended. With the outdoor city parks remaining open to the public, no gathering of more than 10 persons shall be allowed. Signs have been posted to advertise to residents that the play equipment and the structures are not encouraged to be used since they are not sanitized by the city. The 150th Anniversary Celebration Events, scheduled for the remainder of March through April the 30th, 2020, will be postponed or canceled. The Laurel Historical Society's 150th Anniversary Gala, scheduled for April the 4th, is canceled, and that will be rescheduled. The public will be notified of any alternate dates as they've been determined. And we will be meeting with the committee again, probably in about the next 10 days, to look at other events as well. All zoning approvals, or permits, or plans that are due to expire will be extended for a period of up to six months. We are working hard to get business information, and how businesses are doing out in the community, and how they're affected. It's very important that this information be collected by the city. We are going to work very, very hard for federal, state, and county funding to help our business community. And we'll even see what we can do at the local level. I want to assure people, we're going to continue to operate. It is going to cost the city money. We don't have a lot of pots of money that we can reach into. But where we're going to see it, not only some this year, but we're really going to see it in next year's budget when things start, you know, playing out. So I just want to give everybody that update. Mayor and City Council are going to have to make some very hard decisions with the budgets, the next budget coming up. You heard last Saturday, along with city staff and around 25 volunteers, went out in small groups. They hand-carried flyers on the coronavirus to over 6,000 residents. This is important information, so please take the opportunity to read that information. I want to thank city staff and the volunteers in particular for all of their hard work to make that happen. Internally here, we also sent out another 2,100 flyers that were passed out to the apartment complexes along with census material. If you haven't noticed and you're watching on TV, the mayor and the council, you can see our shirts. We don't usually dress this way. But we wanted to make sure you take the time to fill out your census form. And if you need help, please call the city, although we won't be able to let you use our kiosk here in city government, maybe from our IT or others that understand how this operates. Please call City Hall, and if we can help you, we will try to do that over the phone. It is crucial, and it is important, more than ever, that everybody fill their information out on the census. Effective today, all employees, elected officials, vendors, and occasionally, we do have some visitors to my office for meetings, will know, will take a coronavirus wellness test. This includes anyone that visits the Laurel Police Department. They are in the process of working that out. And if by chance, there is an individual that may be arrested by the department, there will be a process for that as well. To help navigate the rapidly changing information for our seniors with the coronavirus, we want to let you know we have a senior information hotline set up. That number is 240-517-7974. Let me repeat that, 240-517-7974. Please take the opportunity to call if you have any questions, and any way that we can help you. The Laurel Police Department and the city's Department of Fire Marshal and Permit Services will enforce all governor's executive orders or directives, as well as the mayor's executive orders. We have a long way to go, but it'll require all of us working together. We're in this together, all of us. I've been, I've been doing Monday mornings, city updates. So please take the opportunity, they'll be on different platforms that we're putting that out. It's an update on what we're doing here in the city. I encourage you to follow along on one of our many different social media platforms to stay up to date. I encourage you to call members of the council if you have questions or you need some direction. They will know, if they don't know the answer, they will make sure they contact Mr. Allen or somebody in the Emergency Operations Center to get you that information. We're asking all of you to stay home to help save lives. That's, you'll see that as you go around the city. We're not sure what the governor's next moves are going to be. You may have heard today on the news that he has ordered the reopening of the Laurel Hospital for surge capacity, if needed. And we have pledged to the governor's office, representatives that I spoke to, as well as University of Maryland system, that we are willing and able to work with them to make sure that that is completed and ready to go in case of need. We're asking tonight, Mr. President, the number for tonight, if you, when the president instructs you to call, the number for tonight is 240-294-1308. So as we move forward, the president will ask for anybody to call in. Think we're going to give 30 seconds, so there'll be a little downtime. But that number again is 240-294-1308. And that's really regarding tonight's agenda items or general public hearing. Mr. President, that concludes my report, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to item number three, General Public Hearing. General Public Hearing, members of the public are asked to call in at 240-294-1308 to testify on any legislation or make any public comments. The president will call the speaker. Each speaker is asked to give their name, their address for the record. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Once again, I opened the number up, it's 240-294-1308. I opened the public hearing at 7:19. While we're waiting on folks to call, once again, that number is 240-294-1308. If you got any information on our seniors hotline number, that number is 240-517-7974. Any information concerning the seniors, transportation, appointments, or things of that nature, you can call the senior citizen hotline number at 240-517-7974. If you want to call to testify on any legislation tonight, the number is 240-294-1308. The lines are open, please call in, 240-294-1308. No one has called in, so I close the public hearing at 7:20. Moving on to item number four, recommendation. A consideration of a bid recommendation to award the citywide concrete repair contract, LA 2001. City Administrator, Mr. Gata.
Thank you, Mr. President. What you have before you is a project that includes construction and repair of concrete sidewalks that are going to be upgraded to ADA compliant pedestrian ramps and concrete curbing at various locations of the city. You have before you the document, we're asking that you, we recommend that you award the subject contract to Santos Construction, the certified minority contractor out of Bowie, the bid of $127,857.50 with an additional $42,142.50 as a contingency for a total of $170,000.
Mr. Gata, open up for a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of bid recommendation, LA 20-01, citywide concrete repair.
Thank you, Councilmember Lez, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Madam Clerk, can you call for a vote?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Sidnor?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number B, a consideration on bid recommendation to award a street improvement project contract, LA 2002. Mr. Gata?
Thank you, Mr. President. Project, this project also is for concrete sidewalks, pedestrian ramps, concrete curbing, and some asphalt repair work and resurfacing on Laurel Park Drive, Cypress Street, Cambridge Circle, and Colony Avenue. It's recommended the mayor and the city council approve a contract to VMP Construction Company. There's certified minority business enterprise, disadvantaged business enterprise, small business enterprise out of Lanham, Maryland. A little bit of $444,223.15 with an additional $45,000 as a contingency, or a total of $489,223.15.
Thank you, Gata, have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the street improvement project contract, LA 20-02.
Thank you, Mr. DeWalt, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Madam Clerk, can you call for a vote?
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Sidnor?
Yes.
Moving on to item number five, a motion to ratify executive orders 20-01, excuse me, 2020-01, 2020-02, 2020-03, 2020-5, and 2020-6 issued by the mayor, Craig Mo. Can I have a motion? Approve, can anybody, can we go around to approve that? Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas.
I approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember DeWalt?
I approve ratification.
Thank you, Councilmember Lez. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, moving on, second public hearing, still on item number five. Item B, a second public hearing with possible action of resolution number 6, 2020, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to establish an amount of impact fees for development and redevelopment in the city of Laurel, Maryland for providing an effective date. I read the title in the record for the second hearing. I opened the public hearing at 7:25 PM. Once again, if you want to call in and testify on that legislation, 6-2020, that number is 240-294-1308. 240-294-1308, to make a public comment or testify on that legislation. Also, a senior citizen hotline number, 240-517-7974. Our senior citizens are a main priority, along with other citizens as well, but senior citizen hotline number. We're ringing direct, directly to the EOC, 240-517-7974. If you want to testify on any legislation tonight, 240-294-1308. There's no one to call in, I close the public hearing at 7:26. Moving on to item number C, second public hearing with possible action of resolution number 7, 2020.
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to call for the vote on Resolution 6-2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for keeping me straight. Call for a vote on Resolution number 6, 2020.
Mr. President, move for approval of Resolution number 6-20, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to establish the amount of impact fees for development and redevelopment in the city of Laurel, Maryland, and report, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Councilmember Lez, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Call for a vote?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Sidnor?
Yes.
Mayor Mau.
I concur.
Okay, now we're moving on. Second public hearing with possible action, resolution 7, 2020, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland approving the renewal lease agreement by and between the city of Laurel and Laurel Historical Society and Corporation for the operation of the Laurel Museum. I opened the public hearing at 7:27. Once again, to call in to testify on that legislation, that number is 240-294-1308, And the number to call, the senior hotline number, 240-517-7974. Once again, if you want to testify on any legislation tonight, it's 240-294-1308. And for our senior citizens out there that need any information concerning our senior citizen, that number is 240-517-7974. There's no one to call in to speak on that legislation. I closed the public hearing at 7:28. I call for a motion to vote on resolution number 7, 2020.
I'll make a motion, possible action on resolution number 7, 2020, a resolution of the mayor and city council approving the renewal lease agreement between by and between the city of Laurel and the Laurel Historical Society for the operation of the Laurel Museum.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Madam Clerk, can you call for a vote?
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Sidnor?
Yes.
Mayor Mau.
I'm going to concur. I just do want to state one thing. I want to thank the Historical Society for working with us on that, and in particular, our deputy city administrator, Louie Ann Cook, who got it all together, and I think it's a great opportunity for them to continue with a 10-year lease and some extension. So thank the council and I'll concur.
Thank you. Moving on to item number D on our agenda, introduction of the first public hearing of resolution number 920, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland supporting the National Capital Region as a priority location for federally supported COVID-19 testing site. I read the title on the record for the first hearing. I opened the public hearing at 7:30. Once again, if you want to call in to testify on that legislation, that number is 240-294-1308, that number is 240-294-1308. If you want to call in about any senior citizen information, that number is 240-517-7974. The phones are open, 240-294-1308. No one signed up to speak. I closed the public hearing at 7:30 PM. I asked for a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Lass. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Clerk, can you call for a vote?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Sidnor?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, can you call for a motion to approve this legislation?
Mr. President, move for the approval of resolution number 9-20, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland supporting the National Capital Region as a priority location for federally supported COVID-19 testing site.
Thank you, Mr. Lass. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Madam Clerk, can you call for a vote?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Sidnor?
Yes.
Mayor Mau.
I'll concur.
Moving on to item E, introduction of the first public hearing ordinance number 1953, and ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend chapter 2, article 8, entitled Civil Emergency, section 2-176 through section 2-185 of the Laurel City Code to provide for certain technical sustainable, sustainable changes relating to the declaration of a state of emergency by the mayor and providing an effective date. I read the title on the record for the first hearing. I opened the public hearing at 7:32 PM. That number to call in to speak on that legislation is 240-294-1308. Once again, the number to call in is 240-294-1308. And our number for our senior citizens that we redirect to the EOC is 240-517-7974.
Mr. President, we are willing, if you'd like, Mr. Allen, to give you a brief overview?
Yes.
Part of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Allen, come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. This resolution that upgrade the ordinance really came as a result of the pandemic that we're currently faced with. It changes the technical language within this ordinance, and it really brings it in line with the current state of the disaster, and also changing some of the technical language to better reflect what requirements we have for federal and state reimbursements, and several other things that we wanted to make sure that was in here to improve and enhance our operation to help us deal with this emergency. So that's basically what it is. Any questions, I'll try to answer.
Any questions for the council?
No.
Once again, the public hearing is open. The number is 240-294-1308, 240-294-1308. The number to call for the senior citizen hotline number is 240-517-7974, 240-294-1308. The phone lines are open, 240-294-1308. I close the public hearing at 7:34. Ask for a motion to suspend the rules on resolution number 1953.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance number 1953.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Madam Clerk, can you call for a vote to suspend the rules on ordinance number 1953?
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Sidnor?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, can you call for a motion to adopt ordinance number 1953? I mean, call for a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1953.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Can I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Madam Clerk, now can you call for a vote to adopt ordinance number 1953?
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Sidnor?
Yes.
Mayor Mau.
Mr. President, you got good backup. As I said, we're all in this together.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Ms. Allen?
If I could, Mr. President, I'd just like to make a couple of informational announcements, if I could. The emergency operations center here in the city is operating from 8 o'clock in the morning till 8 o'clock at night. If you call the main emergency operations center number 240-294-1314, you will be able to speak to a live person. If it's not between 8 and 8 o'clock at night, you can still call. The numbers will be transferred to me, and I'll try to answer them as best I can, but we, we will get back to you. Also, the emergency operations center has an email address. It's Laurel, O-E-M, one word, at laurel dot M D dot U S. You can send us an email. We track the emails daily, and we will respond as quick as we can. We are getting quite a few emails in with questions, but we will respond back to you if you have something. There again, you've heard the senior information hotline number. I won't repeat it, but if you go on the cityoflaurel.org, that's our website, there is a tremendous amount of information on that website. There's the senior hotline information number, there's other information if you scan down that we have put on there. We review and update that information daily. We're coordinating with the Center for Disease Control, the Maryland Department of Health, and Prince George's County Department of Health. We do have a number in case you have any questions about testing. If you cannot get ahold of your primary care physician, then we have a Corona's hotline number by the Prince George's County Health Department. It's 301-883-6627. Again, this is the Prince George's County Health Department's Corona's hotline, it's 301-883-6627, in case you have any, in case you have any questions about testing or symptoms or whatever. There again, any one of these numbers or email or website, please ask the questions. That's what we're here for. We will answer them, and if I don't have the answer, I will get the answer for you and get back to you. Also, small businesses, if you have a small business and you have any questions, we have a small business liaison set up in the emergency operations center, stand by one of our, Ed, sorry, I'm tired. What's the, no, Economic and Community Development, thank you, Bill. But if you call, if there's any business, there's been a lot of information put out by the governor today. We're tracking all that information. We have copies of all the proclamations, all the declarations, so we'll help you out, we'll get you to the right people and get you assistance. Last but not least, I would like to reiterate what the mayor says, it's save lives and stay home. We really, truly believe in that. Also, lastly, if you go on the website, we have all our information, both in English and Spanish. We have brochures that we can hand out or send out any questions whatsoever. And also, for anybody listening within the Laurel region, we know we got Harrod County, Anorona County, Prince George's County, of course, and Montgomery with Laurel addresses. Feel free to call us at that, any number or on the website, and we will answer your questions also and help you get to the, to the right source to help you. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Also, I just want to commend Mr. Allen, like echo what Councilman DeWalt said. I've been watching Mr. Allen work for a week now, and I'm very impressed with his work and his knowledge of keeping the city safe, along with the city administrator. Like I said, we're in good hands with our leadership and the mayor and our city council. So we, our priority is protect our citizens, the citizens. I'm quite sure we're going to do a great job of that. Also, as the president of the council, we're going to counsel the work session scheduled April the 1st, 2020. Once again, the work session scheduled for April the 1st, 2020 will be counseled. I will keep you posted on our next council meetings. We're going to go by day by day with instructions from the CDC, and I will talk to my fellow council members and the city administrator and the mayor to see how we're going to move forward any further business with council meetings. But we're going to keep you informed, like Mr. Allen said, the EOC is working back there very hard, so please call that number if you have any questions, concerns from the city. And once again, we're here to serve you and meet in the journal.